Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, January 25th at 6:30. Please stand for the invocation, followed by a moment of silence.
May we all bow our heads in prayer. Father, we thank you for the grace to be able to gather again at our town council meeting. We thank you for the leadership that you've established in Maryville, Indiana. We pray for the grace upon the president, upon the council members, and the wisdom that you will give in leading this town. We thank you for the police chief and all the police officers, that you'd cover them and cover their family and their children, and that you'd give them the grace to do the things that you've ordained for the citizenship of this town. We thank you, Father, for the collaboration that will go forth even tonight, that it would be effective, healthy, and that you, oh, God, would be glorified in it. We pray that you'd give these who will collaborate in the plans of the town the wisdom, that words are spoken with grace and seasoned, and that it would be nothing that will instigate or cause problematic problems. We pray that you would unify us. As you said, together we stand, divided we fall. Bless this time, bless this opportunity of healthy collaboration for this town, that the business matters may be taken care of and done excellently. We ask these prayers, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. A moment of silence, please. Police Commissioner Ward, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you start, Mr. President, I would like to make a comment on Pastor Dennis Walton. He's in my ward, the fourth ward. He has been a great asset to our ward in Maryville with his community programs, his church, and the youth programs with this gym that he had built. So I want to thank you, Pastor Walton, for coming tonight and showing interest in Maryville and our ward. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Yuzlak. Mr. White.
Yes, also I'd like to take a moment of silence for former county cop Willie Stewart. He passed away yesterday from COVID. And just to let you know, COVID is very, very serious, and I'm sure you know. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize him. He had been a county police officer for quite some time.
We actually had three county police officers pass away, so let's include all of them, please. Thank you.
Okay, point order back. I didn't know who you were talking about. I only know the one I'm talking about.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Moving on tonight to the roll call. Madam Clerk Treasure.
Certainly. Councilman Span.
Present.
Councilman Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
And President Bella.
Thank you.
All present.
Let's do a moment of silence. If you don't mind, please rise for the three Lake County police officers who passed away in just the last few days, right? Thank you, everyone. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, remonstrations. I did receive a request from the FOP president to address the council tonight. I'll turn it over to you, Sean. Please use the podium. State your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sean Lito, President of the Maryville Fraternal Order of Police, 7820 Broadway. Do you want my personal residence or my work address?
No, that's fine, Sean.
Okay.
Can you tell me about the town he lives in?
I'm sorry?
The town?
He's using the police department address, as we should for police officers. Go ahead, officer.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, due to the offensive and emotional nature of the comments made by two of our Maryville councilmen at the last council meeting, I'm accompanied here by state FOP Northwest trustee Curtis Minchuck and FOP president Bill Owensby, who will be speaking on behalf of the Maryville FOP.
Mr. President.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name is William Owensby, and I'm the president of the Indiana Fraternal Order of Police, which represents about 13,000 members throughout the state. These are men and women who sacrifice much in the service of their communities, including their very lives. And as near as we can tell, I'm sure you're looking out over the room, as we all are, there's nine, at least nine, communities represented here by these police officers tonight. It's no secret that the law enforcement profession has undergone intensive and arguably unfair scrutiny in the past few years. Yet today and tonight, and every day, thousands of men and women will put on their uniforms yet again and go out into their communities, this community, and ensure your safety. They need to know that you, your elected officials, have their back. On January 11th of 2022, during a Maryville Town Council meeting, there was what I would describe as an incredibly rude and insulting comment made by one of your elected members. The discussion began by one of the council members, Leonard White, discussing the implementation of a license plate reader, or LPR, on a police vehicle. Now, for those of you that don't know what that is, aren't familiar with an LPR, it electronically reads license plates of vehicles as it passes by and alerts the officer if a plate is stolen, or more importantly, if the vehicle is stolen. Mr. White referred to this as harassment. Now, think of this. Your $50,000 vehicle, or your $1,000 vehicle, it doesn't matter, has been stolen, and one of your council members thinks it's harassment if your police department utilizes technology to recover it before it's stripped, burnt, or used in a crime.
I object to that characterization.
Mr. White, let's let him make his comment.
Well, he's not seeing the truth. And I'm just not going to let him ride out there, and he doesn't know what he's talking about.
May I continue?
Yes, please.
That's not the most incredulous thing that happened during this meeting, however. During the ensuing discussion, another elected town council member, Don Span, blurted out, "We hate cops," and referred to one of the council members who's on the council that is a police officer. He later excused it as a joke with no further explanation or apology. Now, this community, as you all know, has suffered the loss of one of its officers in recent years. The outpouring of support was amazing. I was here, and I witnessed it. And I don't believe for a second that this community hates cops.
Neither do I.
May I continue?
Go ahead.
I don't believe this community hates cops, as this elected official has said. Remember, he represents you, the community. To be fair to Mr. Span, I don't know who the "we" is that he's referring to when he said, "We hate cops," and I can't speak to whether this was a poorly timed joke or not. But what I can speak to is that the comment was a slap in the face to 13,000 men and women. And when you make a comment to that degree, it demands a public apology and likely a resignation. Part of the oath that a council member takes to this council, when being sworn in, includes the language, quote, "And that I will faithfully, impartially, and diligently discharge the duties of the town council, of town council member," unquote, I would submit to you that this oath has been violated.
Two minutes.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Mr. President, may I respond?
Mr. White.
First of all, I appreciate you coming down here, exercising your First Amendment's rights, just like I have First Amendment rights. And I say this, and I've said it to many. You might not like what I say, but under the United States Constitution, I have a right to say it. And you and nobody else in here is going to tell this council person that he can't speak because you disagree with what he said. Secondly, I don't know if Mr. Paul Garder is in here or not, but Mr. Paul Garder is the one that put this out on Region News. And the way he structured it, he chopped and spliced and put all these things together and made it look like Councilman Span and I hate the police. And I'm stupid enough to know that when you got a license plate reader, that I want criminals to get away. That don't make sense. I'm not talking to you. At the end of the day, I think you're wrong for that. I've always supported the FOP. I support the FOP in every single raise they got. I've supported the FOP with all the equipment they got. Now, I might not know, just like I could say some environmental things that you might not know, Mr. Lito, I just think you're wrong as a town employee to come in here and accuse and get everybody worked up about something that you know that man don't hate police. And you know, I was not talking about criminals getting away and, you know, with the cars and stuff when you're riding down the street. I said what I said about civil warrants. So I'm saying, in a sense, you got all your guys here, and I just wonder, what do you want from this? What do you want from this? Because when you bring in this group of people here, it seems like you're trying to intimidate...
I think I can respond to that.
I'm not talking to you right now.
Oh, I'm talking now, because you talk over people's solar eye.
Point of order.
I don't think one person in this room has a problem with you talking and your right to talk, such that you talk incorrectly.
Well, I have a right.
So maybe you should think before you speak.
A right. Do you know what the United States Constitution is? That means, those applause mean absolutely nothing to you. Do you know what the United States Constitution says? You don't have to like what I say, but I have a right to say it. That is protected speech. So if you don't know that, the cops don't know that, then I don't know what to tell you.
There's a lot of people not knowing a lot of things in this room.
Well, that happens, Jeff.
A lot more on your side.
Do you have a response? Sir, you're out of order, please. We're trying to, you know... Well, he's one of the council members, so it's a little different, I believe. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. President, I'll respond once. I don't want to get to a big back and forth. That's not what this was about. Mr. White, I don't know what article you're referring to that's been chopped up. Just let me finish, and I'll be happy to respond to you.
Okay.
I watched the video of the town council, and you specifically said that when a police car drives through the neighborhood and finds someone with a warrant and goes and knocks on their door, I'm paraphrasing, but the essence of the conversation is such as I'm repeating, that knocks on the door to apprehend someone that has a warrant, that that was harassment. That is the essence of what you said. So what I said was spot on. And the comment that I was referring to as the most incredulous comment was not yours. It was Mr. Span's.
I understand that, but we were lumped together. According to the Indiana, what's that, the Region News? I could read you the correspondent.
I don't have any idea what you're talking about. I did not read the article. I watched the video.
The Region News, I'm trying to tell you, sir. The Region News, I said, "Mr. Gudar, I don't appreciate your article slandering my name. You should have called me and asked for clarification and considered that your close friend on the council collaborated, edited version of the council meeting and slandered to my reputation, and I demand that you take that big lie down." That's what I said to him. He's the one that's got the, "You're posting that stuff on YouTube." So I'm just looking at, what are you expecting from this, since you got a whole crew here?
I wasn't expecting any...
I'm not giving apologies.
I wasn't expecting anything from you, to be fair. You were just part of the discussion that led to the comment that we hate cops, and what we expect is an apology from Mr. Span. That's what we expect. That's what anyone would expect if he said, "We hate garbage workers." The garbage worker union president would be here, saying the same thing. It's an affront to the profession. It's an affront to the men and women who will go out there and lay their lives on the line every night, including tonight. There's several of these officers that are leaving tonight to go on a task force.
I'm aware of that.
Okay. So they're willing to lay their lives on the line for people they don't even know. And to have someone say that, whether it was a joke or not, and I'm even giving him the benefit of the doubt, he did chuckle and say it was a joke, but there still should be an apology. He still should be on record as to what his feelings are about the law enforcement officers that he, as an elected official, protects and sees over in this community. That's what I expect. That's what these men and women expect. So we expect, we expect nothing from you other than fulfill your oath. In our opinion, Mr. Span did not fulfill his oath, and we expect an apology. Mr. President, I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Officer Lito, was there any other comment from FOP members? Is that it? Okay. Mr. Span, did you want to address the group at all?
Nope.
Okay.
Mr. President, I just want to... Hey, be nice here, okay? Be nice. You guys are supposed to be laying yourself down for us. I don't want to hear that. What I said to Mr... You didn't hear that from me?
Mr. White, you've got the floor. Please continue.
This is out of order.
Well, these guys came here. They...
Yep. Mr. White, finish your comment, please.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Pearson. I told Mr. Paul Gudar, who was friends with most of you guys, I never said I hate the police or support felons. If you look at my Facebook page, you will see why I post one individual after one individual after one individual. That's what I do. We tried to make this police department a better police department, because that's what the FOP asked us to do. Matter of fact, I thought I got the endorsement from the FOP. I guess they won't take that back. But I just want to let you know, I still say, Mr. President and FOP members, First Amendment rights. If I don't have those, then I don't have anything. If I don't have the Fourteenth Amendment, I don't have anything. But I'm not intimidated by your presence. I just want to let you know, I respect your rights. I respected your rights to come over here and speak, and I'm asking you to respect mine. If you don't respect my right, then you're breaking the law yourself. So I pause, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. For tonight's meeting, I want to thank everyone for wearing your masks, for making sure you're in a seat. We're trying to be careful and cautious with COVID. We've lost a lot of people from this terrible virus. So thanks for your patience with that. We're going to continue on with the rest of the meeting, which tonight's going to be pretty boring. So I'll pause for a minute. If anybody wants to exit, feel free to do that before we get into the rest of the meeting. We're going to do public comment, as always, at the end of the meeting, but the FOP members are on the agenda for tonight.
But people should be able to publicly thank the law enforcement officials who serve our town and thank all the other auxiliary people who support them before they leave. There should be an opportunity for us to say that.
Well, why don't you come up and say that? Come on up.
All the law enforcement people, there are, it's not just me, as a resident of Maryville, there are tons of residents in Maryville who appreciate everything that you do every single day. And we may not have the opportunity to interact with you every day. Maybe that's for the best, but we should find ways to thank you. And the only solution to the problem, the static, is I can't make everybody like you. It's not going to happen. And if everybody did like you, you'd probably be out of business. There'd be no reason for you. So you got that going for you. But we need to find ways to have conversations that build and make things better. How can the police better educate the rest of us who are sitting at home who don't know what you go through? We can't appreciate what we don't know. That's what we should, instead of arguing and fighting about First Amendment, we should be figuring out, how can we make things better? How can we educate people better? And how can we appreciate what you do every single day? How can we appreciate better? You let us know what we can do to say thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Darian Collins, and I have been a Maryville resident for 20 years, a proud Maryville resident. I am the political action chair for the Gary NAACP, which encompasses Gary, Lake County, and Porter County. And I have to say that I'm sitting here and I'm horrified over so much that I have heard. First of all, I don't want, I believe in law and order, and I support the police, but I don't support wrongdoing by the police, by the town council, or by anyone. I believe genuinely in my heart that Mr. Span's comment was a joke, a very poor joke, but a joke. I lived under a president for four years that said a lot of crass things that were jokes, and we choked them down. And a lot of you in this room supported that man, but we lived with it. So I think that we need to stop arguing and bickering. You have come here like a lynch mob against this man, and this is terrible. What he said, he did not mean. And what he said was from a cultural standpoint that none of you understand. None of you understand it. And so instead of demanding an apology from him, which he may apologize... Let me finish, sir. Wait a minute. Let me finish, sir. What I am saying is that there is a lot of cultural misunderstanding here. There is a lot of distance between what we see and know and understand and what you, as police officers, see and know and understand. And I'm a law-abiding and law-believing person in this community. And so what I would ask, we had to sit here for your fellow officer who wore blackface, which was extremely insulting to everyone black in this community in Northwest Indiana, and hardly nothing was done. No censure, nothing. I wish all of you had been in the room to say, "We don't support that kind of behavior. We don't act that way when we're not in our uniforms. We don't believe that. We don't do that." But now you're all here for this. And so we've got a lot of work to do as a community. We need to have, I saw that diversity statement out there. We have a lot of work to do. But I believe that this man definitely supports you. I believe that one does, too, and I do, too. You know what? If he has to go, that one has to go, too. Minchuck has to go, too. Thank you.
So these comments are strictly the FOP issue?
The FOP issue only.
FOP issue only. That's what we're doing right now, sir.
Well, okay, this started at an FOP party, where you're making fun of black people being hung.
Well, we're not going to do that.
And this man put a T-shirt on that said, "Kill Whitey. Kill Whitey. If I did that, then you'd be wanting to run me out of here."
Sir, we're not doing that tonight. We could do it later.
But you all have, you all have no compassion to entertain the FOP about the people that was hung, killed, black people, hung by their necks and set on fire while they was alive, and they thought that was a joke? And what was the FOP then? And you all thought it wasn't even worth of essential? So don't come here trying to have it both ways, like all of a sudden, you know? I used to be a police officer, by the way.
But thank you for serving.
Don't have, you know, don't come with that halfway stuff.
So to be clear, we're doing comments on the FOP issue only right now. We're open to the public at the end of the meeting, like we always do.
I'm just going to follow up on what's been said a few times here. My name is Jennifer Klaasner Allen Dorf. I'm the president of Lake County FOP Auxiliary Number 125. I had no intent of coming here tonight to speak. However, with some of the comments that have been made, I feel that I need to. Jeff Minchuck, he's not my best friend. He's not my enemy. We're acquaintances. I love all of our police officers. For anyone in this room that doesn't know, Jeff's best friend was a black man, and he wore whiteface that night, and I was there. And that's why I'm speaking right now. I was there. It happened right down the street at the Slovak Club. There's a whole lot of people who can attest to that night. So, no, it was a joke. And the point of it was, was that we don't have to be divided at all. Yes, I believe that. You know why? Because I hung out with them, and I hung out with them all the time. And the whiteface that night calls me Auntie Jenny.
Okay, so, ma'am, again, reminder, we're talking about the current FOP issue.
And I am. And I am. I'm replying to what has been said. So they're replying by attacking another council member, and I'm simply stating facts because I physically was there that night. And I was part of that group.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you.
Cliff Caldwell, 2293 North Main Street, Crown Point, Indiana. I just wanted to speak tonight. I am a police officer, and the dialogue that I've heard tonight is really ineffective. I believe the Maryville FOP should get in the room with Councilman Span, Councilman White, anybody else. President Bella, you should be there, too, and a discussion should be had that way. I think that's a starting point. I know Councilman White. I know Councilman Span. I know Jeff Minchuck. I work with Jeff Minchuck. I know Chief Cuttino. And I could tell you that I do believe that Councilman White and Councilman Span do support the police. I don't believe that Councilman Minchuck is a racist. I can tell you when Councilman White got elected, his number one priority was the police, because we do know some things were going on in the previous administration with the police chief that was in there. And he was instrumental in getting new police chief brought in, new assistant police chief brought in. I think that if Councilman Span made the joke, it was in bad taste. However, I think that the dialogue should start with the Maryville FOP, without all of the distractions, the lights, the people going live on their phones, in a room with the council members, the council president, and I think that's where the discussion should start, and just go from there. But like I said, all the comments tonight, you know, I know Jeff Minchuck. I know his brother Curtis. I'm not going to say that they're racist and all that stuff. That was bad taste to wear the blackface, just like the joke by Councilman Span was bad taste. So I think that it just needs to be conversation and dialogue had on both sides that's respectful. Thank you.
I'm Dennis Walton, of Chapel Police Department, but also a citizen in the region. And my prayer was that we would move forward with peaceful resolution. And I want to say that I, at the same, don't believe that the joke was intended for someone to believe that it was something that's true. But at the same time, there has to be a standard of integrity when we're in leadership position, where there's already hostility and problematic issues in our world. My prayer is that we would move on with the business of the town. Police officers are necessary to protect the citizenship. We have lots of good police. We have some bad. And I believe they're working on perfecting what things lack. But at the same time, let's bring a peaceful resolution to this so that the business of the town can go forth. And we can bring all kinds of issues, but the FOP, they're trying to do their part. Everybody's trying to do their part. May God give us the grace to do things decently in order so that we can bring proper closure and love everybody the way we should. Love and forgive, that's what we must do when it comes to our effective moving forward in this town. Thank you.
Sabina Miller, 3120 West 75th Place, Maryville. I was at the meeting last time, as you guys know, and me, as a resident, not FOP, not police, not anything like that, not related to any council member, whatever, I walked out of here very upset about the conversation that was had at the council and the comment that was made. I have no reason to be upset about any particular person, except what I heard was the fact that there was the harassment speech, which is exactly what happened, as I saw it in the video later, too. I also heard that I actually believe that you did not... I also heard that I actually believe that you did not understand the technology and that you did not understand how these warrants work. Because if you did, you would have never made the comment that a person who cannot pay the medical bill has a warrant. I don't know of anybody, not worked in financial services, that would get a warrant over a medical unpaid bill. That was ridiculous, okay? So that upset me at the time because I felt that you were making very strong statements about something that you didn't even understand. That statement floored me, it just floored me. I walked out of here, so you guys say whatever you didn't think he meant it or said it. I saw it this way, and I came out, perception is reality. If I see this and feel this way and walk out of the room and nothing gets done, this goes, where it goes to the rest of the council. I actually came out of this meeting saying, why didn't the rest of the council stop this and clarify it right then and there? I was really upset walking out of here that night, very upset. And that's one reason why I came up to the podium when I came with my comments. And the first thing I did was thank the Maryville police for the hard work that they're doing and for everything they're doing to try to keep us safe, because they're doing one hell of a job. And not just Maryville, Lake County, everything. You know, they're getting bombarded with these crazy people from Illinois, and yet they are catching almost every one of them, almost every one of them, and they always put their lives on the line. And that's why I want to say, perception is reality. So if you guys think this was all a joke, we didn't walk away thinking it was a joke. And I want that noted.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments on this particular topic tonight? Very good. Moving on tonight to discussion of police commission appointment. Mr. Svetnov.
Thank you, Council President Bella. On January 11, 2022, the county council took action on a police, police commission appointment. On that date, Mr. Guernsey was appointed on the police commission. Evidently, the town overlooked an application submitted by a Republican applicant at the same time. Under Indiana code, we need to, we need to have a blended, what's called a blended commission, which means it's a three-two, either Republican or Democrat, or Democrat or Republican commission. So at this time, I recommend that the town council rescind the appointment of Mr. Guernsey and go ahead and appoint Mr. Rich, the Republican candidate, to the police commission at this time.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. White, second by Mr. Span, to remove Commissioner Guernsey and appoint Michael Rich, a police commissioner, to fill a Republican slot. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable voucher approval for January 25. And we also have the approval of the town council meeting minutes of January 11. I will point out that the payment voucher does not include the ARP voucher, which we'll vote on later on in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, Chair recognizes Mrs. Uslak for the second to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing committees, Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway.
One thing, Mr. President, all I have is that for those who tried to get the COVID gift cards, we have them. So, and I'm, I'm looking for you, Pat, or whoever, to contact the people that came in and didn't get them, and give them the opportunity to come back and get their card.
Thank you, Mr. Hardaway. We're in the process of going back through our, our call sheets and contacting those people. But as Mr. Hardaway said, those gift cards are available. You would come to Town Hall and, working between two departments, you'll walk out of here with your gift card. Thank you.
And it's important that we say that it's for anybody that's had the vaccinations after December 1st.
That's correct.
And we need all kinds of proof of ID and proof of the shots. Your shot card and your ID.
Right, yeah, suggesting if, if you are still unsure, give us a call, Town Administration, 769-5711, extension 302, and you, you can ask what's needed, and you'll have that information. So when you do come in, you can be processed quickly and leave with your card.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Minchuk.
Yes, uh, during our last snow, our Public Works was very busy, hard at work over the weekend. We had some complaints back about people still parking in the street while the plows are trying to get through. The town does have an ordinance enacted, or on the books, I should say. Anything over two inches of snow, vehicles have to come off the street. We tried pushing it out there through the town the best we could, through advertisement, social media, whatever, trying to get the word out. Things are getting a little bit more difficult, so now we're to the point where the next big snow we have, if the trucks can't get through and the cars are still on the street after two inches, citations are gonna be starting to be issued. So we want to get that word out there and let everybody know so we can get our emergency vehicles through safely, so we get our residents through safely, so we have the streets more safe for everybody. So please, 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 if it starts snowing, try to get your vehicles off the street. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yes, I want to just add to Mr. Minchuk's report. I think that we had to make clear, because I've had that experience, I think I've talked about that before. So once you get ticketed, how long does the individual have to move before he moves, removes his vehicle, or her vehicle?
It starts snowing, get your vehicle off the street.
Anything else, Mr. Minchuk?
No, sir.
Elections, Public Relations, Town Beautification, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Environmental Affairs Chairman, Mr. White.
Thank you, President Bella. I'm gonna yield to Marge Uslak, because we're transitioning a little bit, but I wanted to add something from the environmental side of it. So I, I yield to you, Ms. Uslak.
Thank you, Mr. White. Is that quite all right with you, Mr. President?
Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. I will continue on with the COVID report. Updated statistics as of last Friday show that 1,517 people have passed from COVID right here in Lake County. And a total of 98 people died from COVID in northwestern Indiana as of last Friday. So I'm begging everybody to get their vaccinations. Please, you have a good opportunity to pick up a Visa card too. And what else we have gone? The shelves are empty in the supermarkets because we have a shortage of truck drivers at this time, from the east coast to the west coast. If the virus has a lot to do with that, I really can't say, but it is out there. So, get your shot, and please, please just go get your vaccination if you did not have it. And thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mrs. Uslak, thank you. Mr. White?
Yes, and thank you for allowing Marge to finish that report off. The reason I wanted her to do that because I want to try some different technologies, not like license plate readers, but it's a really advanced technology to make a determination where your hotspots are in Maryville, specifically using the sewer system. They've done it in certain parts of, of the country. For example, if, if I get a sample and it shows that there's a high concentration of dead microbes in there, then we know exactly what part of, of Maryville is experiencing that, that spike. So I'm gonna be reaching out to MCD, and I'm also gonna be reaching out to Independence Hill Sanitary District to see if I can work with them to find out how we can start monitoring, excuse me, I want to make sure, so we can start monitoring where the potential hotspots are, and then how to respond once we find out where those hotspots are. Because COVID don't sit still in one place, it's, it's all over the place. So I just wanted to add that before, and, and that's why, one another reason why I yielded that to her. Thirdly, Mr. President, I want to do a lot better job at the compost facility. I know we drop leaves off and things there, but that's not real composting. Maybe in the springtime, I want to start feeding those piles with some, an addition nutrient, so we can start heating those piles up, so we can turn those things over within 90 days instead of waiting three years for it to turn to compost. So I just wanted to give you a brief on where, which way and which direction we might, the environmental committee is like to go. Thank you, sir.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one opening in code enforcement. We're looking for a full-time code enforcement officer. Turn in your resume and application to our HR department, as well as down at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. We're looking for one full-time site supervisor and one part-time site supervisor. In same format, turn in your applications to our HR department. And probably the second week in February, we will be interviewing both, for both of those two positions, Pat. That's all I have.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Minchuk.
Yes, sir. We are hopefully finishing up the last part of our negotiations with the FOP. We should have something here to the council and to the FOP within the next meeting or two for final approval. Other than that, the, I know the fire department within about, besides the last meeting, they had several structural fires, they've been working hard. So we'd like to send a word out to them, as well as the PD. I know since our last meeting, they've had several, several, big calls, I should say, that they've been dealing with. So thank you for all your going in, we love both y'all.
Thank you. Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Uslak.
For the benefit of the crowd, I will state again, all the local parks in Maryville have been rehabbed. They are in very good shape. So we will see the kids out there this summer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Abandoned and lighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I read a troubling article, I think it was Sunday, that Lake County has 9,200 properties that have been up for tax sale over the years, and they haven't, nobody's bid it on them or nobody's paid the asking. And I think 72 or 73, 72 or 73% of those are in the city of Gary. And between Gary, Hammond, East Chicago, they're like 90% of all of those parcels. And Maryville is right in there somewhere. We've got some, but we don't have, you know, we've like 1% or less. And I'm trying to get a list of the parcels that we have so that we can look at them and address them and see if maybe these could be some that we, the town pursues the county to take over those properties so we can do something with them.
Councilman Hardaway, what I'll do at this time is contact Commissioner Allen and see if he cannot have the Lake County Tax Sale Department generate a list for us on that.
Yep, thank you, because, yeah, we, we need to, I mean, it's, it's staggering that we got 9,200 parcels in Lake County, and most of them are up north. So we need to address that, and we need to pay close attention to what's going on here in the town of Maryville to make sure that our number doesn't get, doesn't creep up to 2%. So I, I just think that we need to do that at this particular time and pay close attention to it and so that it doesn't become an epidemic for us.
Did you have something to add, Angie, or should we wait to your report?
If I could add it at my report, it does tie into what Councilman Hardaway is referring to. Unless you just want me, just have a brief report. I've been invited tomorrow to Indiana University Northwest for the tax sale conference in regards to, before it being released. So after that, I can follow up with you to give you an update on that as well. So I'll probably have some information ahead of time. Okay? And then also, we just wanted to mention with economic development, we're focusing, after having meetings with administration and management, we will be focusing on business retention as well as new business development as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, Mr. President, there is a committee, and the name escapes me right now, but it's a housing committee, and we used to be part of that, and I used to be on the committee, and then I got off, and then we appointed somebody else, and then they quit going. But I'm gonna get all the information again, and either I'm gonna ask to be put back on the committee, or we're gonna find somebody else to put on that committee, because it's over in Hammond. And it's Tim Brown and a whole bunch of people are part of this committee. It's a good committee, and it has to do with land banks and things like that. And so I think that it will be, it'll benefit us in the long run if we become a part of this.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yeah, I'd like to just add to what Richard was talking about, because I did experience growing up in the city of Gary. And what I did notice is that the town, the Lake County Commissioners, they just throw their properties back to the city of Gary. And they should take care of their own properties. You know, if they can't sell them in a tax sale and say, okay, here you go, we don't want them no more, then that becomes an issue where that particular community has to pay to try to keep that up, or somebody's gonna come and burn it up, and it just makes eyes sore. So I understand what Richard's saying on that as well. And I agree with him in terms of trying to get Mr. Allen, as you said, to give us a list and see what we can do with that. Well, thank you. One more thing, sorry.
Mr. White?
Yes, I did get an email from Mr. Hardaway, I appreciate you taking care of that busted water main last night. I, I wasn't aware of it, but he did tell me that he had that taken care of, so I just wanted to give him some applause on that. Nothing else to add. Thank you.
Steve, piggybacking on that comment, could you please share the emergency contact number with the council and Pat? So that way, if we can't get ahold of you, we know where to call. Because with these freezing temperatures now, I'm concerned we're gonna see more water main breaks.
Absolutely.
We need to be prepared to get them turned off and get the salt out.
I believe, I believe actually Mr. Hardaway's contact might be better than mine.
Well, let's just get them together on a list and show them.
Mine's a private contact. I'm not giving out his phone number.
Say no more. That's fine.
But I, I will get you. I've got another, I've got another contact. I'll get you his phone number. Because he's the guy that takes care of busted water mains. He's the supervisor.
Perfect, that's perfect.
I'll get that for you, I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, guys. Mr. Pettit, what's going on at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center these days?
Nothing, it's vacant. Nobody, nobody coming to it, so, you know. Mr. Price? I'll turn it over to you, Torrance.
Good evening. We've been booking a lot of different things right now. We just reserved the MMA fight for February. We also booked three wrestling tournaments that'll take place in March, June, and July. We've also had some basketball going on, just going through the first phases of having our own league and doing that. So that's always good, because you're gonna learn different experiences of different things, what work, what doesn't work, so we'll be better the next time. So we have our first hosting event at the Dean and Barbara White Center this weekend. It's also our picture day that's going on. Also, in terms for recreation, we will be going out looking at parks to see which parks will work for us that we can host a spring soccer league this coming spring. So we're gonna be driving around analyzing all the parks and going from there. One of the things that we are looking into also is our parking lot, looking to reduce liability. So we're gonna put some bids out there to see if anybody would like to help us in assisting us in sanding the parking lot, salting the parking lot, so it can remain clean and therefore with all the snow and stuff that comes down, so it's not as compact. We thank Public Works for their help in helping us. They were out the past two mornings, 3 o'clock in the morning with our maintenance staff in, in doing that. And so we're just looking at different ways to make sure we can stay on top of that.
Can I, can I say something?
Mr. King?
We, so we, we send public works trucks down there to help salt if Mr. Neal needs it. I've offered that to him, and every time he calls, we do. So if we got somebody available to save you guys money, we, we don't mind salting it.
Right, right, we just, just looking to be big boys and handle our own business and looking at different ways also, so it doesn't always stress you guys out and with all that you have to do.
Yeah, we'll work together, whatever you need, we'll work together.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Let's look in-house first, always. Mr. Pettit, anything else?
Torrance and Steve, I'd like to call a, and Leonard and Jeff, I'd like to call a meeting for next Tuesday night before the Plan Commission, 5 o'clock at the Dean and Barbara White Center. I know there's some punch list items. Steve, you've been going through the building with Lisa and Torrance. We've had some issues in the Mike Anderson Event Center with dings on the walls and alternatives. We've had some issues in the Mike Anderson Event Center with dings on the walls and alternatives that we need to probably talk about, some physical things. And then, Terrence, if you have any programming, administrative things to discuss with the committee. So, let's do that at five o'clock at the Dean and Barbara White Center. Terrence, if you can check with Barb and get us one of the rooms, whether it be Commercial Insight Room, or the McDonald's Room, or one of the three Mike Anderson Event Rooms. I would also, since I have a captive audience out here, all these police officers, I would like to remind you that we do have a brick program at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, and if you want to honor a family member, a fellow police officer, maybe a fallen officer, you can get with Terrence, he has forms where you can get on the wall next to the Bozak Court. The bricks are a hundred dollars. I think most of us up here have bought a brick.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
I'm actually waiting for a few more checks, Mr. Pettit.
So, we do have, we'd like to get the, the brick wall filled in with sponsorships. I know former Sheriff Dominguez bought several of those. So I would encourage you guys to get down to the community center and see Terrence, and he'd be happy to sign anybody up for bricks. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you.
There's always a sales pitch at the end, right?
I love your sponsor naming, that's beautiful. Special projects that includes food and beverage tax, diversity, town birthday, and Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, I mentioned last council meeting that we were talking about the food and beverage tax, and it's kind of like still up in the air. It's not completely dead, but it's on life support. And so, you know, this is a short session, and I don't know if it's going to go anywhere or not. I've had numerous conversations with people, and some people offer us hope, and some people offer us doom and gloom. But we are still hoping that maybe something can be done this session, and if not, there's some things that's going to be done between now and next long session, that can hopefully enable us to get the food and beverage tax finally. We're working on it, we're not giving up on it. But we just hope that, we would hope that we could get it now, while, while the iron is hot, but we're, I don't think it's going to happen. But I do know that this time next year, we'll be happy, because I think we're going to get it.
Very good.
We got a lot of things going on. Secondly, Mr. President, next month, we're going to start meeting for whoever wants to be part of it, for our Fourth of July parade. We're looking for a great Fourth of July parade. We're looking to do fireworks in the Century Mall Plaza parking lot, next Fourth of July, either the third or the fourth, whichever we want to do. But any, any resident or council member that's interested, that wants to be on the committee, please reach out to Pat's office and give him your name and phone number, and we will be probably starting about the middle of February, we're going to start meeting to address that. And one last thing, Mr. President, we had a conversation about this earlier. I am going to contact Maryville School Corporation and see if we can get a couple of high school kids to come out next month, being Black History Month, and for the, for each meeting, have someone come and just enlighten us about Black History, and pick a subject or individual, and, and give us a two or three-minute presentation. I think that that'll, that'll go well for us. That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to Department and Commission reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Lake County Solid Waste District has started moving into the, the new building down the street at the old girls' school, girl and boys', I'm sorry, the girls', Girl Scout Building. They had an indoor trout stream that had been going on for twenty years. Again, my background with environmental water, that's that type of situation, we had an artificial trout stream. So, they're not going to bring the trout with them to the new place. So they released, they released the trout stream into the Wolf Lake, actually. And somebody already caught one of the fish, and he notified the county that he had caught that fish. So he put it back into, to the lake there. Additionally, Mr. President, the Lake County Solid Waste District held elections last week. Rick Long from Lake Station is now the chairman for the Lake County Solid Waste District, and also councilwoman, Lake County Councilwoman Christine Seid is also the vice president again, I'm sorry, the vice chair. So, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, otherwise known as NERCy, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things. First off, NERCy's got a seventeen-million-dollar grant to complete the Marquette Greenway path from Chicago to Niles, Michigan. And secondly, they are working with Salt Village in, over in Illinois, in Chicago Heights, to bring a trail from Salt Village into, through Dyer and Shererville. That's like, that's a fifty-thousand-dollar tab that we got there to assist them in doing the study to bring that trail into Indiana. So those are the two things that NERCy's got going on right now. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Stormwater Management Resources Director Matt Lake.
Council President Bella, Mr. Lake had a personal matter this evening, consequently he's not able to attend.
Very good. Pat, keep the microphone for the South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority.
Sure. Very quick, we had a meeting today, we being the Board of Directors for the organization, and the three most important items touched on, discussed, convention center, which is a very important topic to us and others. Second, food and beverage tax. And the third was personnel related to permanent leadership with the organization. As things continue to move forward, we'll keep the council informed and share whatever hard information we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
I said food and beverage, Pat. What are you guys looking at there?
Well, you know, a lot of the same discussion as, as you've heard, but it's, it's a little different because of the connection with the push for the establishment of a convention center. But it's, again, similar conversation. And I, I share your optimism. I think if not this year, then next year, which is important, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Department head reports. Angie, did you have anything to add? Vicki, code enforcement. You've been busy.
We have been busy. As Councilman Minchuck said, it's a matter of public safety for you to get your cars off the street, so that emergency vehicles can get down the street, et cetera. If you were to, someone were to have a fire, and you've got everything blocked, then the fire truck isn't able to get there. We used to write eight-hour warnings, and we found that that just wasn't working. So, we're just citing people now. So we've, so far, in two days, we've written forty-six citations. There's only three cars that didn't move, and those cars can be towed. So, it's just something that, we're going to keep hitting it, because with it being so cold, it's going to be real easy to tell who hasn't moved. So, we're going to keep hitting it with citations, and hopefully that'll make people understand that it's really important for them just to move their vehicles and not wait for that eight-hour warning. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
Yes, I want to actually thank Vicki, Steve, and Pat, and I'll let Steve tell you what he did over there. But I just wanted to give them some applause, because they did a good job. But we had a huge illegal dumping site over there, so I just wanted Pat, I mean, I'm sorry, Steve, to inform you on what they did.
Yeah, so we had a illegal dumping site next to the old blockhouse, Sixty-first and Taff. It's just, just to the south of Sixty-first and Taff. There used to be an old roadway that went through there, that is town property. So what we did is, Councilman White had called us about it, and I brought it up on the G I S, realized it was town property, went over there, looked at the site, TVs, mattresses, you name it, was over there. Our Public Works crews went over there, did a fantastic job, hauled all the stuff out of there, cleaned the site up, and blocked it off, so nobody can get to that. We're in the process of making some no dumping signs, getting them material for that, and we will post that. But it, it was a challenge to get it cleaned up in, in this weather, but we, we got it done, and it looks, it looks really good over there.
And again, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. No problem.
Chief Cutino.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I would just like to give a hats off, like Councilman Minchuck stated, we have had an uptick with our calls of service, and our officers are doing an excellent job out there. That's all my report.
I did see that the L P Rs are a hot topic tonight, that's for sure, but I have seen that they've come in quite handy, and we've gotten quite a few vehicles recovered recently.
That's correct. We are completing our training with those, and they are a jewel.
Good. Good to hear.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
This is for Chief Cutino. There's a task force out tonight, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Is that public, or is that?
Well, it is. Maryville partners up with the county and other municipalities, police departments, and we trade different sectors that we go out and hit that we feel is hot. And tonight happened to be a location in Maryville. I'm not going to share. It could be here.
Yeah, we don't really.
Yeah, I wasn't looking for it, but I do know the activities out there, and I do appreciate the surrounding departments wanting to help us to get that done, because we did have an incident in Ward Seven last night. There was a shooting of a apartment complex in, in Ward Seven, and I think a lady did get hit in the leg, but it wasn't any murderous-type situation. But nevertheless, I just want to bring that up and let people know about it.
Very good.
That's right.
Anything else, Chief? Anything else to add, Terrence?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. Steve.
Okay, so, Public Works, we've been very busy, keeping the roads clear. I think our crews have done an excellent job. We've had some resident complaints. Either I myself personally, or Kevin Mark, our street superintendent, has verified those complaints, so that's been done. Thanks to Vicki and Tiffany, Chief Cutino and the Police Department for working with us on getting these cars moved. It is a major hindrance to us. It affects a lot of things. Our first responders can't get through there, like I said, you know. The picture that was posted on social media that Mr. Bella posted, I took that personally myself. That was a road that was blocked on both sides by cars. We couldn't even get a plow truck through there. So that's a problem for us. It hinders our, our operations. Takes a lot of time, because then, once the cars are moved, we have to go back, and we have to plow the street again. It takes us away from other things. So, thanks to both of you for taking care of that for us. We're, we're moving forward as a department, and as a whole, we're all coming together. I feel we're making this happen, and things are going to get, get easier for us. So I definitely appreciate that. And that's, that's all I have for right now.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. President?
One quick question, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Are you fully staffed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, our department's fully staffed, yeah, and everything's working out very well, and...
Okay, I just wanted to...
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, I just wanted to ask Steve about the roofing at the North Barn, did they ever finish that?
Yeah, yeah, the roof at the North Barn has been done, yeah, it's done. Turned out, turned out really nice.
Okay, thank you for the information.
Sheila, anything else for you?
Yes, Mr. President, in your practice, in the council practice, everyone should have received our Planning and Building Department twenty-twenty-one year in review. I'd just like to thank, take this opportunity to thank the council leadership. I'd like to thank the, the development team we have here in the town of Maryville, and the hard-working men and women of the Planning and Building Department for last year's work, and we're looking forward to another tremendous year in twenty-twenty-two.
Great, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
Yeah, I'm glad Sheila said something about the department, because you do know we lost a firefighter a little over a week ago. It was a kind of sad thing, was a pretty young guy. And I just wanted to make a notification that we lost a fire. Thank you.
Mr. Reardon, anything to add?
I got a quick question there, since Mr. White brought it up. What are we going to do as far as replacing the fire inspector? Have we thought about that yet, or no?
Mr. Hardaway, I can speak to that. Mr. Bell and I have had preliminary conversation. I have been in communication with Fire Chief Yerga, and, in, in consultation with Ms. Schein, as, as the council knows, and the general public might be interested, this is a dual responsibility position. Critical inspector position, planning and develop, planning and building department, as well as fire inspection utilized for arson investigation. So, what I expect is, is that soon we'll have a, a job description, or refine the job description we have, and with the appropriate approvals, seek to find a, a replacement to fill that position.
Yeah, I understand, it's just that I understand the complexity of it.
Yes.
But I also understand the importance of it.
Correct.
That, because it hinders our development.
Right.
If we can't do inspections.
Right.
So I just, you know, if anybody knows anybody, I guess that meets the criteria.
That's, that's true. You know, please, contact our office, feel free to contact Sheila Schein.
Right.
Sheila, what is, what is your number, where they might get you? Or the Fire Department's general number. So, thank you for the question.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that I've been in contact with Chief Yerga, and Chief Yerga, Assistant Chief Lilly, along with the help of the State Fire Marshal's Office, they're going to be processing our, our permits, so that we will keep up with what we need to do in the town. We have several new construction permits right now, waiting for approval. Take five oil change, the collision, J D M collision, that's going up on Maryville Road. So, I was in contact with him, so that we won't fall behind.
That's good.
Thank you.
Anything else to add, Pat, on Tom Anadu's report?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to general orders, we have First Reading Ordinance twenty-two-dash-zero-two, the ordinance of the town of Maryville authorizing additional appropriations in various funds for the twenty-twenty-two budget. Trista, what is this? This is the large one for the American Rescue Plan, is that right?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Each of the matters you have in the additional appropriation are a little bit different from the others, but it is appropriate as they're all, excuse me, as they are all additional appropriations to the twenty-two budget, to include them in one resol, or one ordinance for you. On the American Rescue Plan, even though the money was appropriated to be spent during twenty-twenty-one, we do think it prudent to include it, again, now going forward for twenty-twenty-two, and not simply be included in that first initial grant umbrella. It was not specifically included in the annual budget, as the planning through the committee was still occurring during the budget time, and so simply to include it here today would be important. The Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Fund has some additional funds that have not been spent yet, and the way that the budget was ultimately passed and approved, the restricted fund had been included back as a sub-fund, or a Department of the M V H fund. The D L G F originally had given me comment that that was acceptable, later decided maybe it wasn't, and this simply fixes that, allows the money to be spent that you all already decided and approved should be included in the budget. The Community Center Gift Fund, as you know, the five-hundred-thousand dollars will come out of the foundation holding each year to the Town Council. It is important to then appropriate that once it's received, so that it can be spent here going forward. That is revenue that was planned for in the budget already. The Computer Training Center Fund, you might recall, was still in discussion during the budget workshops and sessions. The advertised amount was listed at... The advertised amount was listed at zero and so based on the council's final decisions to allow the expenditure of that money, it is included here today for its use. And then finally, the Lowet Public Safety Fund, the raises were decided for the, um, police officers after the budget was approved. There is balance in that fund for this additional money to be spent and this then will allow the remainder that is needed for those raises to be, uh, given throughout the year.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mrs. Uselak to approve on first reading ordinance 22 dash zero two as submitted. Madam Clerk, Treasurer, anything to add?
No. She covered everything.
Any other questions from the council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
First reading, you still want, still want me to do the roll call?
It's ordinance, we do roll call.
Sure. Okay. Councilman Span?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Bella?
Yes.
Mr. President, to Trista, is there a need to suspend and read this now?
Yes, I would suggest that you do so.
Motion to suspend, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit to suspend with a second by Mr. White. We'll call the first vote at seven zero, just for the record, a motion passed. Any questions on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, this will be a roll call, too. Madam Clerk, Treasurer.
Mr. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yeah.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uselak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, thank you. We are suspending the rules to read ordinance 22 dash zero two on second and final reading tonight.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Hardaway. For approval of ordinance 22 dash zero two on second and final reading. Any comments from the council? Hearing none, open to the public, is there any public comment on this ordinance? The record show there's no public comment. Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
Aye.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uselak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, the motion carries. Moving on to first reading ordinance 22 dash zero three. This is the ordinance of the, uh, payroll for the town of Maryville, adjusting some pays in the, I believe the Parks Department, right? Yep. Trista?
Yes, sir, there were four, uh, areas that the Personnel Committee and I believe the Dean Barbara White, Community Center Committee have looked at to adjust the pay. Um, and Mr. Hardaway, Councilman Hardaway, I might need a little bit of refreshing myself. I believe it's the Recreation Coordinator, uh, the Assistant Director, let me back up for a moment, I'm sorry. The total pay for the Assistant Director was reduced, uh, as suggested by the committee to balance out then the increases that the committee is also seeking. So it is a net difference of zero, but each of these positions are slightly adjusted. So the Assistant Director was reduced. The Recreation Coordinator slash Office Manager was increased. The Building Manager was increased, the Front Desk Supervisor was increased, and the Events Center Manager was increased. I believe those are the changes.
Motion to approve ordinance 22 oh three, please. Second.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. Pettit for approval of this ordinance 22 dash zero three. Under discussion now, I will add that these are being done for retention purposes. I want to make sure that we're not just, uh, thinking we're increasing salaries for the calendar year because we weren't doing that for any other employees besides PD. Any other discussion from the council? Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uselak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, the motion carries. Is there a need to do this on second reading, Trista, due to payroll or anything?
I would defer to councilmen that are working on this matter. It is set up right now in the ordinance that February thirteenth is the day, uh, that would have followed, the first day of the first payroll period that would have followed the next council meeting. Uh, if you wish it to begin sooner than that, you could suspend the rules...
Motion to suspend the rules.
And, and adjust that date to...
To, uh, one thirty.
The thirtieth, January thirtieth.
Motion to suspend the rules and to adjust the date to one thirty.
A motion to suspend by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Pettit to suspend the rules tonight to read this ordinance on second and final reading, uh, due to the timing of payroll, I believe, right?
Yep.
Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
Aye.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uselak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, we may suspend the rules and read ordinance 22 dash zero three on second and final reading, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck, Chair recognized Mr. Hardaway for the second to approve ordinance 22 dash zero three on second reading. Is there any public comment tonight? Any public comment on this motion?
Not on the motion.
It's on the ordinance. It's a second reading, uh, so, yeah. Hearing none, back to the council. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer.
Mr. Span?
Aye.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uselak?
Yes.
Mr. White?
I'm sorry, Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes.
All seven in favor.
Seven to zero, motion carries. Thank you. We have one resolution tonight on the agenda, Resolution 22 dash zero five. Mr. Pettit?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, Resolution 22 oh five, um, is a companion resolution that the Redevelopment Commission passed earlier in a meeting. This is to issue a $6 million bond. Uh, the purpose of those funds would be, um, street paving in Ward Two, street paving in Ward Six, and the purchase of approximately a million dollars' worth of public works equipment. This is the first, this is actually the second resolution, uh, in that process. In that being said, Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Resolution 22 oh five.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uselak for approval of Resolution 22 dash zero five. Discussion? Hearing none, this is a...
Uh, Mr. President, I think, miss, to, to Mr. Svetinoff and Pat, I think we have a problem, guys.
Yep.
The whereas contemplates the issuance of refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,600,000.
Ooh.
It should be six million.
I, is that, should that be six million, Pat?
Yes.
Because if I go back to my RDC resolution...
Please.
Well... The RDC resolution had six million in it, Joe, under Section One.
Motion to tape.
No, we can, actually, we can just correct it.
We can just have Pat, uh...
Have a new typing, yes.
Pat, what do you think? Should we just call Bob tomorrow?
No, we can, we can have it corrected.
Call Pittman.
Pittman?
Yeah.
Yeah, Pittman wrote it, it wasn't Bob.
Yeah. Just take the, do the vote tonight, do the signature...
Later.
Later.
All right.
As soon as possible.
When he gets the, yeah.
Okay.
The correct document.
My motion stands, Mr. President.
Okay. So, Mr. Pettit, though, your motion stands if we change this to read six million dollars...
Six million.
And at everywhere it states 1.6, it should read six million.
Correct.
Yes.
It's just a, uh, yeah, it's a scriving error, that's all that was. We have a motion and a proper second, they still stand? Any questions from the council or concerns?
Good catch, y'all.
Yeah, actually, good catch. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to the American Rescue Plan voucher register summary and approval.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
Am I missing something here? Um, are we at the Resolution 22 dash oh five?
No, that's the one we just did, I believe, right?
Okay, so now we at the BZA and large gatherings?
No, we're at the, uh, your revised agenda should have...
Revised.
The American Rescue Plan approval of the payment voucher, this short page here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We needed to do that after we moved the money to allow these payments to be made and hence the change in the order.
Okay, I, I just didn't see it there.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion.
Mr. President, may I? We do have...
We have a motion by Mr. White with a second by Mrs. Uselak to approve this payment voucher. Go ahead, Trista.
Uh, I received a call from Ms. Santos, the bookkeeper, today about the reversing entries that were being done for the approved sanitation in the building for payroll, as well as a few of the other items that had been, um, paid early on out of other funds despite being approved by the committee while the, uh, bookkeeping was settled. Uh, you might recall a food bank donation was made very early as well. So for the, uh, the books to be accounted correctly, some of those entries need to be reversed from the funds they were paid from into the ARP fund. Those totals, uh, she prefers to have on an APV itself. I have those here today and we would ask that they also be approved in conjunction with this claims list that you have here.
And signed.
Are you okay with this, Madam?
Yeah, I gave it to her. To be signed, yes.
Let's add them to them, okay.
Uh, would you like it verbally or just simply included with the paperwork?
Uh, no, how, um, how many are there, Trista?
Uh, three total numbers.
Oh, just please recite them for the record, that, that would be good.
As to the building maintenance and sanitation, a total of $33,243.76. For the aid to nonprofit organizations, $5,000. And for the job training assistance, $6,137.4.
Thank you.
And if you could pass that through on the side.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. White, does your, uh, motion still stand, including the three additions to the claims voucher?
My motion still stands.
Mrs. Uselak, does your second still stand?
Yes, it does.
Very good.
Thank you.
They're, they're included in it, and just for clarification, we just wanted to specify that those had, had to be reversed back according to State Board of Counsel.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Are there any BZA or large gathering actions before us, Sheila?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any old business before us, council? Is there any new business before us tonight? Moving on to public comment. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we allow two minutes for public comment. Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, my name is Robert Bugs, I'm going to give you a quick, uh, class of, uh, diversity. Diversity is how two races, white or black, how one is treated, how one is to be tolerated. I came out tonight to let you all know that a man makes a comment, black, and a white man makes actions by putting on his T-shirt, "Kill whitey" while assimilating to be a black man being beaten by a white police officer. Now, this was done at an FOP party, but to see all of you all come out tonight because he made a comment, but you think it's okay for somebody to say "kill whitey" and being beaten like this by a white police officer? Nobody thought that was wrong, but let me tell you what happened during slavery, what white people did to black people. They raped, and last time I was here, I brought some pictures, they raped children, seven and, uh, eight-year-old girls and their parents, then hung them and set them afire. They took babies to make a statement and stomped on their head, took them from their mother's arm, till their brains came out through their nose to keep them in place. This, they thought was funny, they did it at FOP party. Minchuck went out of his way to put on blackface and a wig to be beaten by a white officer, and a black man put on a Ku Klux Klan, uh, uniform, Hardeman, Lake County Police Officer, Commander, and he is a police officer. One of the most racist things you can say to a black person to let you know that you're racist, I got one black friend, one, one black friend. But to see all of you come out tonight, that proves my point, that racism is alive and well in Maryville. Now, like I said, I used to be a police officer. I've had some, uh, personal problems with the Maryville Police Office. And if you all, if some of you all that don't know, there was a man named Minchuck that decided Maryville had to pay six figures because he killed a black person. Now, I know about the blue curtain and everybody sticking together, but enough is enough that you would take all of your time to come out here over a comment, what you think that what Minchuck did is okay. Now, he censures when a public person make a comment that is offensive, to censor him publicly by the organization which he's a part of. This Maryville Town Council didn't think it rose to that level to censor him. In other words, it's okay. He was entertaining some, uh, people at the FOP party, and a black man went a Ku Klux Klan robe, and then Mr. Bella said, "We need some diversity training." Really? And then who did they get? I'm a legal redress investigator for the Gary branch of NAACP. Somebody from Maryville High School, which is one of the most racist there is. I've, I've, uh, investigated at least six complaints of racism against staff and students. And do you all have the audacity to come out here tonight to talk about a comment said in jest, but it's okay? Now, they said, somebody said, well, he apologized, well, he had a chance to apologize on national television. Do you apologize? What'd he do? He turned around and walked away. Apologizing in this little confound here doesn't mean anything.
Mr. Suggs, please, please finish up, I've been generous with time.
And by the way, I, I just want to make one last comment. The last time I was here...
Make it brief, sir.
There was some police department that thought maybe they should follow me out of Maryville. Maryville. I'm not intimidated by that, and I want the chief to know that.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Curtis Pearson, and I'm a resident of Maryville, and I've been out here about twenty-five years. I'm the first African-American that was ever elected to be precinct commitment out here. I am on the Ross Township Board, and I'm a precinct, and, and, and one thing that I came out here, first of all, I want to say, is I want to apologize for my outburst, but the reason for my outburst was exactly what Mr. Bugs said. Y'all came out here to roast this man, okay? Everybody want to jump on this guy. I am a former correctional officer. Mr. Lido was my training officer. We say all kind of jokes out there, okay? And it don't come all the way to here, where you gotta get this man, you want to get him fired? Do you want to kill him? What do you want to do? This guy did the same thing. We let him slide, we apologize, he's still on the council. So what do you want him to do? Be off the council? We just want it fair. I like people, I like helping people, that's why I'm on the Ross Township Board, okay? I came out here, I apologize to y'all, but the outburst was necessary, because we ain't playing that no more, that black-white stuff. We ain't playing that no more, okay? So get that straight. As far as everything moving forward, we want Maryville to progress, y'all are doing pretty good jobs, okay? We wanted to keep it that way. We want to be together, unified front. Y'all came here to separate, okay? We trying to get together, we might, we're not letting that happen. Give this man a chance like you give Mr. Minchuck a chance, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you very much.
I spoke earlier, again, my name is Darian Collins, I'm a Maryville resident over twenty years, and the political chair of the Garrett NAACP. I, Mr. Pearson, you said everything that I wanted to say. We're not against progress, we're not against what is going on in this town, but we feel that certain issues, there is unfair treatment. If you look this way, your treatment is this way, if your skin looks this way, your treatment is another way. We want that to stop. We want that to stop here. If, if, and what we're feeling is not a figment of our imagination, it's real. And so, what I would suggest, um, Mr. Hardaway's suggestion about, and I thought that was interesting, what Mr. Hardaway said about having some students from Maryville High School come in for only Black History Month and talk about Black History, uh, there is a bill down in Indiana State Legislature, House Bill 1134, that wants to give parents the, the authority to pull their children out of classroom lessons. They want the, they want the authority to approve lessons, because there is so much hysteria going on across this country about learning the real truth about, uh, non-white history, black history, Hispanic history, Italian, whatever it is. And so we have a, I thought that was interesting, because the state of Indiana is not on the side of Mr. Hardaway. But anyway, I am all for those students coming in in February, uh, if he wants adults to come in in March, April, May, June, July, August, September, October, November, December, I can send people in, we can talk, because there is, there's so much, uh, I think that we just have to talk, and we have to come together. I don't know what was done in terms of the cultural sensitivity training that you all did last year, but that needs to broaden. That needs to broaden, we need to have something in every precinct, we need to have something in every, uh, office in this town, we need to have community and citizens involved, because we have a chasm, and it's gotta be fixed, because I want our town to stay. I love this town, I love my block, I called the police and y'all come, I love it, and I want it to continue, but I don't want to be scared either. When my son leaves, I don't want to have to tell him, "Leave your hands on there," or when they stopped a young man in front of me, I'm in the window filming, because I don't know what's gonna happen to that young man. So we gotta work in this community. We want it to grow. But you can't treat Span any different or worse than you treated Minchuck. Thank you.
My name's Craig Bell, uh, I live at 2618 West 57th Place, Mr. Span's, uh, council. Uh, last year I purchased a house in Maryville, and I made a quarter million dollar investment in this community. Thirty years' worth of my life, I'm investing in this. That's why I'm here today. Um, I don't care what color you are, I'm gonna judge you by the content of your character. Now, times might have been different back then, Jeff, but it was wrong, but you obviously see, this community is never gonna forget that, and as long as you're a councilman, they will always bring that up. As far as I'm concerned, the best thing that you can do for this community is probably step down, as well as the content of the character. Mr. Span, I'm gonna hold you accountable, just like I will to Mr. Minchuck. You said something last week that was probably out of character, that was in poor taste, and you have obviously inflamed a lot of, uh, a lot of passions around here. You should probably step down as well, sir, especially in the fact that you have not made a single comment concerning this, not a public statement, not anything. That's all I have, that's all I have to say, I wish everybody best of luck.
Thank you.
We don't share the same sentiment. We don't want nobody to step down. Everybody give another chance. We want, you need a job, everybody need a job.
Mr. Pearson. Mr. Pearson, thank you.
Hello, my name is Shonda Flowers. I live at, uh, 6137 Connecticut Street in Maryville. I also work for the town of Maryville. Um, one thing I want to say is, I commend the council on allowing this form today, allowing, um, some of the things that we would normally do a little bit relaxed in an effort to allow, um, the public to address remarks that Councilman Span, um, said that was very upsetting. But what I challenge you as a council is to also make a conscious decision to create the same form for any community person that too may also be offended by something someone said. And so, when I came in, I looked, and what I noticed is that this form is a little bit different than the form that was put in place for Councilman Minchuck. What happened was these seats, majority of them, half of these seats were not in, not to mention, majority of those seats also had signs, "Reserved for Fraternal Order of Police," not allowing the angry, um, African-Americans and those that supported or was not supportive of what, um, Councilman Minchuck said and did. Not only was the space of the chairs not here, but also, I commend you first by allowing all of these doors open, which are exits, that from a fire person's perspective, should not be blocked, but it is allowed. Every exit is crowded, every exit is allowed, as well as all of the individuals that wanted to come in were allowed. That was not the case, and we, as today, are still in the midst of a pandemic, as we were in a pandemic before, but that was the excuse. If I'm not mistaken, there were exactly four people from the public that happened to be African-American that wanted to come and speak. I challenge you as leaders, as we as employees wrap up with our diversity and inclusion training, that as a person who is minority, who works for the town, is concerned about making sure that there is work behind those words and those intentions, and that although we need to start as a community, having these difficult conversations, I stand in agreement with the gentleman who stood up here. It's not about what color you are, when you make those remarks, then those remarks need to have some weight behind, that that's not going to be allowed in our community, so no one of any race is offended. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Rich, I'm the chairman of the Maryville Republican Party, um, and I just wanted to thank the council and President Bella for the appointment tonight and the vote. I appreciate it, uh, going into the police commission. I, I just want to thank the FOP for standing up for us every day. Uh, my family was in law enforcement all their lives, and to me, it's a very big thing to say that police officers need to be treated with respect, that we need to, to honor our police department, and we need to keep them safe, and make them feel like they're, they're not someone that we're supposed to be afraid of, but embrace them as people that protect us on a daily basis. And that's the only thing that I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Yeah.
Um, going on a different subject, there are a couple of things that I wanted to, uh, bring as public comment. One of them I know was, street paving was mentioned earlier, and there was street paving on multiple roads this past year, which I really appreciated, however, when they paved it, they created strange dips, and now when it rains, we actually have like little, little lakes on the side of the street, and when it ice is over like it does now, we got like little ice patches where, you know, it's really not very safe. So, I just wanted to bring that up, so whoever is paving those roads, maybe, you know, there could be a review done for whatever is claimed, that they're not done this way. The second item I have is, so, on the last meeting, there was talk about nominations and elections and all this kind of stuff. Now, I actually went high and low and tried to find anything about that, and I couldn't find anything, and I know I found in the minutes something saying in December about a press release, so I chased after that press release. I even went so far as to subscribing to the Northwest Indiana Times, because they block you in no time, and again, I couldn't find anything. So, I feel that on the town council, on, on the town website, there should be something about it when there are positions open, when there are elections happening, how people can apply, how can they nominate for it, because to me, the whole process is a total mystery. I couldn't get anything from the minutes, and nothing from the website, and nothing from any newspaper. So, I would like the council to make a change there, if possible.
We'll do one better. Mr. Reardon, tonight, would you please go over how we post and where to find it and everything, so she'll know for the future?
Yes.
And that way, you know, it'll help. Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Brian Massarch, 201 East 68 Place, uh, long time, almost lifetime resident of Maryville. Um, I would like to springboard on what's being said about communication. I emailed, uh, Mr. Reardon, uh, didn't get a response for nine days, I emailed him again, I simply asked a question, where were the commissioner and committee roles posted, what newspapers? I got no response. If you go to the mayor of a website, it has information that is years old. I would think that at least the town council people would want to be identified with the proper committees that they're on. It, the, 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 the community information that residents can get is, is ridiculous. We need to do a lot better job at getting information out, because when there is no information, people make up their own information, and then that's how rumors start, and then before you know it, people are believing rumors way before they believe the truth. I don't understand why we couldn't, I, I asked this question at the last meeting, I don't understand why we couldn't just answer the question. As an example, tonight's meeting, if you look at the calendar, tonight's meeting isn't even on the calendar on the website, and unfortunately, most people in the world today use the internet to find their information. A- as far as in general, we have a lot of people here, and we should seriously, as a community, think about having some kind of sit-down discussion to figure out some of the issues that we're facing. And you know what? We might have to listen to some hard, awkward facts. We are gonna have to be willing to accept that certain people have done things, maybe even unwittingly, to hurt other people, but more likely, it's just misinformation. And sometimes it's hard to ask questions, because, uh, did I say the wrong thing? Did, I don't want to offend anybody, but you know what? I believe that the police do an awesome job, and maybe the police don't know how to ask. How can we inform you guys of what we face? And I brought this point up before.
Okay.
They have tools. We need to sit down, and we should form something so that we can come together, have the discussions, have the awkward questions, and then maybe we can come to an agreement. We, until we have that awkward conversation, we're all gonna be in this place where we have this fear, and fear leads to anger, and anger leads to hatred, and then that leads to suffering. And then if we want out of it, we gotta have the conversation. You are the leaders, you should schedule the meeting and get something going. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to announcements tonight, we have the next town council meeting at February eighth, excuse me, at six-thirty. Oh, please, ma'am, go ahead.
I do have something I'd like to say. So again, my name is Jennifer Klaasner-Allendorf, and I would just like to clarify, um, that I was not defending what Jeff Minchuck did, and I don't have one black friend, I have many, because I do judge people on their character and not the color of their skin. What I do have is one black godson, and I have one son who is a police officer. No, he's my godson, so we're not, we're not talking about friends, so, um, and I have these hard discussions, because the mother of my godson fears for her black son because of police, and I fear for my son as a police officer. And there is too much division, and again, I really would like to clarify that I do have these hard conversations often, and I was not defending what Councilman Minchuck did, but we have to, we, we can't only have it one way. And Councilman Minchuck did apologize, and I believe that that's all that we're asking for, and sir, I need you to understand that I do have one son, and he is on Lake County Sheriff's Department, and he backs up officers in Maryville all the time, he backs up officers around this county, and as, as a mother, I worry for my son every day. And what makes it worse is statements by an elected official to create more divide. We keep talking about actions, that was before he was a councilman, and he did apologize. And again, there was a black man who was part of that that was dressed as KKK. Again, I'm standing up here a second time saying, "I'm not defending Councilman Minchuck." However, sir, I do believe you owe your community an apology, and I think that's all anyone is asking for. You had a resident stand up here and say, "She was offended when she left here." I'm sure she's not the only one. Sir, I wasn't here asking to step down or pushing to step down, or even here to support anyone who was pushing for you to step away. I believe that everyone does deserve equal opportunity. Councilman Minchuck apologized, and I think that's the appropriate thing for you to do, and then we all need to move forward, so that I don't have to worry about my godson every day, and I don't have to worry about my son every day, the way that I do now, with the kind of divide that is happening. I grew up in Maryville, I love this community, and it is despicable to me that you don't even think that it was inappropriate enough to offer an apology for. Thank you.
I'm taking a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
One second, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Oh, you did not announce the Plan Commission meeting, Mr. President.
I, I don't have that on my announcement.
Yes.
I'm sorry, uh, I forgot to mention my earlier, uh, address in the Public Safety Committee. We will be having our first monthly meeting on the third. Anybody from the council is invited to come. It is an executive session, because we will be talking about private matters of employees, so that will be on the third at 4:00 PM with the fire and the police department. Thank you.
Mrs. Yuzlak, did you have something to add to the announcements?
Yes, I did.
Please do.
We have a Plan Commission meeting next Tuesday, we have one petition on the agenda, okay?
Very good. Is that at six-thirty also?
It's not on my agenda.
No, it's not on my agenda.
But I thought I would add it.
Why don't you second the motion to adjourn?
I will second the motion to adjourn.
Second, I miss-
I did not know he was looking.
All in favor? Aye.
We're not gonna take it anymore.
I enjoyed it.
That's a song called, "We're not gonna take it."